Good evening, everyone, and the meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, could you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
I apologize. Give me one moment.
Okay.
Adequate notice of this meeting was provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council meeting notice dated September 17, 2020, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
Mr. Naidoo?
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Present.
President Fox?
Here. Thank you. And now I'd like to call on Bob Flanagan from the First Aid Squad to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam President. I pledge allegiance
allegiance.
To the flag
of the flag
of the United States of America
of America.
And to the republic
and to the republic
which stands
which stands
one nation
one nation
under God
under God
indivisible
indivisible
with liberty
with liberty
and justice
and justice
for all.
Thank you. And now, Madam Clerk, would you please read the notice regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. This meeting is also streaming live through YouTube. To view this meeting via YouTube, please visit the city's website at cityofsummit.org and click on the YouTube icon at the top of the homepage. While this council meeting is being broadcast live and members of the governing body are participating remotely, steps have been put in place to accommodate public input during this meeting through public notice dated September 17, 2020, which provided information for those wishing to participate during public comment periods at this council meeting. Public comment will be permitted at specified times as outlined in the agenda. Please refrain from commenting until solicited by the council president. For those members of the public who wish to make a comment during a designated public comment period, please use the raise hand feature and you will be called upon by the council president. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. And lastly, we ask that all participants remain on mute unless called upon to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now on to minutes for approval. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of regular enclosed session of September 1st?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Any opposed? If motion carries, moving on, we've got the reports. Our first report is from Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. The New Jersey State Department of Health is reporting that positive test case results of the COVID-19 coronavirus are at the highest level since spring, when we had 205 cases in March, April, and May, and 105 critical care patients at Overlook Medical Center. While this could be part of the ebb and flow of the virus, the rise in positive test case results may indicate an increase in high-risk activities around the Labor Day weekend. In Summit, there were 12 cases in June, 11 in July, 7 in August, and now 15 or so, so far, in September. Please, let's continue to do our part to avoid a surge in cases by wearing a mask, washing hands often, and maintaining a safe physical distance of six feet from one another. None of us want to go into lockdown again. Voting information. Today is National Voter Registration Day. The deadline to register to vote in the November 3 general election is October 13. Every active registered voter in New Jersey will receive a ballot in the mail. Ballots can be returned by mail with a postmark on or before November 3, 2020, to be counted as a valid ballot by the county clerk. Additionally, a secure ballot box will be located in Summit. Step-by-step instructions on how to complete a ballot are available at www unioncountyvotes.com. You can also check your voter registration status and track your ballot on the UniCounty Votes website. The biggest change is that provisional ballots will be used at all polling locations instead of voting machines. Each polling location will also have one voting machine available for use by those who are physically unable to complete a provisional ballot. A full list of wards and districts can be found at www.cityofsummit.org/elections. Volunteer for Summit. Community volunteers are needed to serve on several City of Summit boards, committees, and commissions. The deadline to submit an application is Thursday, October 15. For more information, please go to the city website at cityofsummit.org. Volunteering is a great way to be involved in our community, and frankly, now more than ever, we need volunteers for all the things that we've been facing in 2020. Last night, I had the privilege to welcome fellow residents at a vigil honoring the memory of Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. It was comforting to come together as a community to recognize the profound loss to our nation and celebrate the life and impact of a true American hero. I am incredibly, incredibly thankful to Justice Ginsburg for leading the way and creating opportunity for women to, in her words, "belong in all places where decisions are being made." Thank you to Summit marches on for organizing the vigil, and thank you to the Summit Police Department for making sure that we were all safe. On a more sad note, Dr. Michelle Betredo, who was a former member of the Common Council, passed away rather suddenly on August 29. Dr. Betredo was a pioneer in every sense of the word. She was an ardent feminist committed to the issues of equality and equity, to the advancement of women in science and technology and politics. She was a humanitarian who pursued her passions with dedication, vigor, and purpose. The daughter of Michael and Jenny Betredo, she was the first person in her family to go to college and ultimately earned a PhD in organic chemistry from UConn. She worked her way up from research science to executive management at Stellenees Corporation. In her political career, she earned the title of the first-ever female Democrat elected to Summit Common Council. She was past president of the New Jersey Women's Political Caucus, which was a bipartisan organization, and was highly active in a number of other groups, including business and professional women, New Jersey State Democratic Committee, and more. One of her proudest accomplishments was being honored as one of the first Tribute to Women in Industry Award winners. In her words, above all, she was a loving mother and to her daughter Nina and a caring and dedicated wife to her husband Sunil Garg, who both survived her. She was very encouraging when I was first thinking about running for mayor, and she was always encouraging to women in any party to become active in the community. So she will be missed. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for that lovely statement about Michelle Betredo. She will be missed. So moving on, we're to Michael Rogers for the City Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. This fall in October and November, the city plans to plant 175 new trees in the city right of way. Letters have been sent to affected residents notifying them of the upcoming planning initiative. This fall as well, Union County will also be planting 163 trees on it in the county's right of way. Once specific information from Union County is available, the Department of Community Services will share it with the public. The Division of Public Works will begin its annual road paving project during the week of September 28, weather permitting. Streets to be paved are Elm Place, Risk Avenue, and a section of Franklin Place. Curbside leaf collection begins on Monday, October 5, and will continue through Friday, December 4, or the first major snowfall. Leaves left curbside in biodegradable bags are collected on scheduled household garbage collection days. Please do not include twigs, branches, and other yard debris in leaf bags. Property owners should not rake or blow leaves into piles in the street. We would appreciate it. Part-time school crossing guards are needed to help children cross busy intersections to and from school from 7:45 a.m. to 8:30 a.m. and 12:15 p.m. to 1 p.m. Monday through Friday, when school is in session during the COVID-19 pandemic. When the district returns to a normal schedule, the afternoon shift will be from 3 p.m. to 3:45 p.m. More information is available on the city website at cityofsummit.org. School crossing guards are paid $34 per day. And finally, the Department of Community Programs is reporting that its season at the Summit Family Aquatic Center was better than expected with no COVID-19 issues. From July 1 to September 7, approximately 28,908 members passed through the gate for an average of 498 patrons per day. This number reflects an increase in attendance of 58 members each day. During the summer of 2019 and being open 21 additional days, 37,483 total members attended for an average of 440 patrons per day, excluding guests. In 2019, 1,703 memberships were sold. This year, 1,176 memberships were sold. And for revenue realized, the Aquatic Center took in approximately $277,000, which is above the budgeted amount by $27,000. Overall, it was a very good summer for the Family Aquatic Center and the citizens of Summit. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, City Administrator Rogers. And now on to the Council President's report. On September 16, the Summit Police Department, in partnership with Summit Downtown, Inc., launched a Wear a Mask campaign focusing on encouraging school-aged children and young adults to wear a mask. Summit Downtown, Inc. provided $105 gift cards for police officers to hand out when they see students wearing masks properly over the mouth and nose. Private donations have been given to allow the program to continue, and the police department now has a total of 300 gift cards to distribute. Thank you to everyone who is supporting this program and wearing a mask. Thank you to SDI for coming up with the initial funding to get this program started, and thank you to our wonderful police department for kicking this off. We've gotten a lot of great press for this, and I think it's a really positive way to encourage people to wear masks. And so thank you to everyone who's made this program possible. Next, on Monday, members of the Storm Isaiah's Ad-Hoc Committee that I sit on along with Mayor Radis, council members Naidoo and O'Sullivan, City Administrator Rogers, and Chief Communications Officer Amy Carins met with Summit's JCPN L representative, Carol Bianchi, to receive a report on JCPN L's response to the storm. Our committee provided feedback to JCPN L on power restoration deficiencies that we identified. We will continue to work with Carol Bianchi, our liaison, and with the company to make essential fixes. We invited Ms. Bianchi to make a full presentation on JCPN L's storm assessment once it's complete, and we anticipate that this presentation will take place sometime at a council meeting in November. And finally, New Jersey Human Services is making opioid overdose reversal drug naloxone available for free, September 24 to 26, at participating pharmacies throughout New Jersey. New Jerseians will be able to visit participating pharmacies and anonymously obtain naloxone for free without a prescription or an appointment. Each pack contains two doses, and this drug can reverse overdoses from opioids by blocking the effects of opioids on the brain. Those who obtain naloxone will be also given information regarding addiction treatment and recovery through Reach NJ, a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week addiction hotline, where people who have substance use disorder or friends and family can get immediate assistance and support from live, New Jersey-based, trained addiction counselors. Individuals who call the program's toll-free number, 844-REACH-NJ, will reach a live staff member who will help connect them to treatment. So that's all I have for tonight, and then we'll be moving on to presentations. So we have two proclamations tonight. Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. This is where, you know, I think the Zoom meetings have been very effective, but I personally missed the opportunity to have a proclamation in person with members of some of our great community organizations. So the first one is for the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad. So Bob Flanagan, would you meet me at the podium? You need to unmute, Bob.
I wish I could.
I me as well. All right, so here we go. Whereas health and safety are paramount to a sound community, whereas since July 28, 1962, the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members have provided a public service to our community in support of health and safety, and whereas the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members have given an untold number of hours of service to Summit residents and patrons of our businesses, medical institutions, and stores, and whereas the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad answers more than 2,000 emergency calls for help each year from Summit residents, visitors, and from surrounding communities in need of mutual aid support, and whereas Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members have responded to emergencies of all types, both small and very large, including a major decontamination effort on September 11, 2001, and operating a temporary emergency clinic during fire, power outage, and other emergencies at Overlook Medical Center, most recently in July of this year, and whereas in addition to emergency calls, Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members regularly provide non-emergency coverage at many community events, and whereas the efforts of the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members, all of whom are volunteers, should not go unrecognized, and whereas the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad relies solely on donations to provide its many services, and whereas the hard-working, dedicated members of the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad provide these services at no cost to the patient or taxpayer, saving the City of Summit nearly $1 million per year. Now therefore, I, Nora G. Radist, Mayor of the City of Summit, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2020 as Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad Month in the City of Summit in recognition of the importance of all the good deeds and contributions by its volunteers for 58 years, and I ask all citizens to join me in praising these volunteers and lending the squad your financial support. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this 17th day of September in the year 2020. I just want to also add, the information for many of these proclamations is provided by the recipient. We talk together and we draft the proclamation, and it speaks volumes of the members of the Volunteer First Aid Squad that they did not mention in the proclamation this year their heroic efforts during the COVID-19 crisis. They were on the front line. They worked incredibly hard at putting themselves and their families at risk, and they are such an enormously talented and dedicated and loyal group of people and self-effacing. So they did not put that in their proclamation, but we all should recognize it. And I hope everyone in the community is grateful and thankful to everything that the Volunteer First Aid Squad does, and that we recognize that they do indeed exist only by donations. So I hope everyone, when you get that envelope every year for the annual fund, I hope you dig in and try to support this wonderful organization. Bob, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, Mayor, if I could. Thank you very much, you, Mayor Radis, and everyone for recognizing our squad. We sincerely appreciate it. And I want to say thanks to the whole community for supporting us during the darkest days of the pandemic. Your kind words, encouragement, and many meals kept us going when we were tired and even scared. We were never hungry, I must say. We also received much financial support in that time, enough to offset all of our COVID-related expenses so far, and that means a great deal to us. It also means that we find ourselves where we usually find ourselves this time of year, asking you to support our annual fund drive, which kicks off this week. It's our main source of revenue each year, and we depend on it. Indeed, it's what allows you to depend on us. You may see your appeal letter from us this week. You may even see it tomorrow. Please make a donation if you can. It will help us be ready for the next challenge so that we can serve you or someone you love. On behalf of Chief Kari Fair and the rest of my colleagues on the squad, thank you very much. We are very, very grateful for all of your support.
Thank you, Bob, and please convey all of our thanks and admiration to every member of the squad.
Thank you very much. Will do, Mayor Radis. Thank you, Council, and everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, would you like to do the second proclamation, please?
Yes, certainly. And I do not believe someone is here to receive it tonight. That is correct, Mayor. Okay, thank you. Whereas September 17, 2020 marks the 233rd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Nora G. Radist, Mayor of the City of Summit, do hereby proclaim September 17 through 23, 2020, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this 17th day of September in the year 2020. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So moving on, the time has come at this point in the meeting for the public comments. So the public will have an opportunity to comment on any matter not on the agenda. So if you were, I see, we have raised hand already. So I ask you, when you're recognized, to please, we'll unmute you, and you'll unmute yourself, and then I ask you to state your name and your address. And if you have any written comments, you can email them to the clerk@rlkatis@cityofsummit.org. And I ask you to, we have a lot of people on tonight, so I'm going to ask you to limit your comments to three minutes, please. So our first one is Sal Wright. Let's see if we promote you to panelist, if that'll work. Ms. Wright, go ahead. I think you may have to unmute yourself.
Go ahead, Ms. Wright. Council President, I have found that the computer itself may be on mute as opposed to the Zoom volume. So if Ms. Wright would look at her computer, perhaps the mute button is still on her microphone.
Okay.
It could also, it could be the headset, too. Yeah, sometimes the headphones.
Do you have your volume up on your computer, Ms. Wright? No, this is not working.
It's your computer's volume you might want to look at. Mine is at the bottom right of my screen. No?
Okay. So maybe we should, we'll come back to you, and you can try to see if you can work this problem out. And okay, we'll take the next comment. Okay, so we've got, we've got Jim Bennett. Go ahead, Mr. Bennett.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Good evening, Mayor Radis, members of council and city staff. I'm Jim Bennett, 38 Fairview Avenue, Summit. As last appeared before you, I have it on authority that in Germany, the average power outage is 13.3 minutes per customer per year. Experts in Germany attribute this low rate to the location of power and telephone data lines underground. Our population density is similar, so why can't we have what they have? At the August 18, 2020 special council Zoom meeting to review the response to Hurricane Isaias, I heard reports from Police Chief Bartolotti, Fire Chief Evers, and a report by Council President Fox about meetings she had with JCPN L. Without question, the performance of municipal staff was commendable, but to my disappointment, I heard nothing from council about the beginning of a game plan to prevent recurrence of power outages. Now, there may be other solutions to make our power more reliable, such as redundant circuitry or even more aggressive vegetation management, but before we can even get to the point of debating recommendations, we need a full accounting from JCPN L. I therefore call on mayor and council to have a representative from JCPN L, and I was going to say at the next council meeting of October 6, 2020, because it will have been two months since Hurricane Isaias, to give a full accounting of where the failures took place on August 4, 2020, in and affecting Summit, including the location of every single downed power line. The report should be in plain English, understandable by laypeople such as I, and there needs to be a copy available online for all to read. This request is specific, it's reasonable, and it's achievable, and I expect JCPN L to do its job. So I call on council to take the first steps so that our experience with power outages can be more like Germany's. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. As I mentioned, we did meet with JCPN L, and they have a whole process that they're going through. First meeting with County Office of Emergency Management. So they're meeting with all their county offices first, and then they will, and then they will finish their debriefing, and then attend all the various cities that they, so our representative represents 24 cities, and she said that she will be, you know, trying to fit everyone into her schedule as soon as possible. So I think, you know, she had given us by November as the deadline. I don't think we'll be seeing her on October 6, but I understand that it has been a lengthy time, and we are continuing to push for that meeting to happen. But in the meantime, we are working with her to talk about ways that we can improve the process. And I'm going to turn it over to Council Member Naidoo, who is chairing our ad hoc committee.
Thank you, Council President. So let me, since probably Mr. Bennett is not the only one that wants to talk a little bit about power, I'm going to lay out a framework, because I think Mr. Bennett referenced, what is the framework that we're operating under? So what we're doing under the ad hoc committee is looking at two different avenues. First, we're looking at what we can demand of that is achievable with JCPN L. And so in order to do that, we're looking at different options, some of which, I will say, I've had private conversations with residents who have reached out to me about what they thought would work and would not work, and we've investigated some of them. One of them, Mr. Bennett refers to, is with regard to underground power lines. For example, we talked actually to the JCPN L rep about underground power lines. One of the issues that deal with our underground power lines is the fact that not only would you need to put the power lines, but the poles are also used for cable, and so the cable lines would also need to be put. You have to remember, right, there's different circumstances. For example, referring to Germany, Germany, obviously, after the war, much of devastation, many cities were completely destroyed, and therefore you had the ability to go ahead effectively and raise the ground and do a different type of system. I'm not saying, I'm not familiar enough with Germany. I'm saying there's very different circumstances in different locations. So you may be able to come up and say, no, David, that's not So you may be able to come up and say, no, David, that's not the case in Germany. It really doesn't matter for, for our purposes, because we have to focus on what happens here in Summit and our neighboring towns, what they've looked at. Chatham Borough, for example, has looked at, had the committee on underground power lines. They thought it was too cost effective, cost prohibitive. The same thing was the reaction we got from the JCPN L rep. It's going to be cost prohibitive to do that. The other aspect of underground lines is that if you have a substation, or you have the transmission lines down, such as we had with respect to the last storm, our downtown was out of power, even though those lines were underground. And so to say, well, if we had underground power lines, therefore, we will not have power outages, would be wrong. We have to look at, as I started off with this, what is reasonable, what is feasible, what it can be done in a short term, what can be possibly done in the long term. The second aspect of what our committee is doing is looking at how we can make improvements with regard to how we manage things. There is, for instance, there's a reference, Mr. Bennett made, to vegetation. There are two different types, two different entities, let me put it that way, not types, two different entities that are responsible for vegetation. Underneath the lines, JCPN L has a vegetative management plan, and they have responsibility for taking care of vegetation. Now, we, as a city, also have vegetation responsibility that we go ahead and we do. And in fact, we make sure when we are planting trees, we are doing so in coordination with the types of trees that can be managed underneath power lines or near power lines. Part of the issue that we had with respect to the last storm is we had a lot of private trees that went down and that took out power lines. Now, residents have a responsibility to make sure those, the trees that are on their properties are properly maintained, and those are the types of things that we need to look at. So the plan is not necessarily that everything is, let's go and figure out with JCPN L. The question is, what can we do as a city to improve our internal communications, our external communications, infrastructure, the regulatory framework that we have for managing things? We're going to look at all of those different options. Similarly, we're going to talk to JCPN L about, from their side, infrastructure, smart technology. In our call with JCPN L rep, we talked about smart technology. We talked about the types of new, what we see in other communities as far as what can be done and how communication is done in order to ensure that communication is properly done and effectively. Those are the types of discussions. These are, as you can appreciate, complicated set of issues, because there are multiple towns that JCPN L deals with. We have to deal with different aspects within our town. And so we have to understand, this will take some time, but that doesn't mean it'll take forever. It just means that we have to go through this in a systematic and thoughtful manner to achieve a result that is doable and is cost effective. I hope that answers generally, hopefully, other people that may have questions. I'm trying to give you a broad overview, and I don't want anybody walking out of this meeting thinking, wow, they're just kicking the can, they don't have an idea what they're doing. That's not the case, far from it. We have different ideas that we have to test out and see what works and what doesn't work. People in this town are not going to accept the idea of spending $3 million per mile for 80 miles of underground lines. That's very costly. It's just not going to work, and we can't just turn around and say, well, JCPN L should do that, because guess what? Who ends up paying for JCPN L costs? The ratepayers, when they go to the BPU and ask for a rate increase. So we've got to figure out what's doable here. I hope that helps.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Naidoo. So I'm going to move on. We're going to give Ms. Wright another chance to see if she, if she can make her sound work now. You want to give it a shot? Oh, this doesn't look promising. Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
You can hear me now?
Yes.
Yay! Okay, I apologize. I am Sally Wright from 26 Mountain Avenue here in Summit. Thank you, Mayor Radist and councilmembers, for having me this evening. I have already emailed the agenda to the email address that you recommended. I'll try and keep it sweet. Unfortunately, on Sunday evening, between 6:00 and 6:10 p.m., my daughter had her bike stolen from outside CVS. It was slightly embarrassing, given that she was given a very strong lock that she chose not to use, so it was essentially gift wrapped for the person to take. But what we've noticed is, I've been working with the police since Sunday, and there have been at least four bikes that have been reported stolen from outside CVS in the last week alone. And so what I am proposing is that, unfortunately, as we know, bikes are a hot commodity, and that stealing has increased in Summit, and unfortunately, my daughter included, we aren't making it that difficult for these, these individuals to take these items. So I was proposing that in, in cohorts with, say, the DARE program, we were to do an educational video for not only bike security, but also bike safety. And with the luxury of having all of the children online through all of the school system in the afternoons, that could almost be a streamed educational video for children to learn, and their parents alike, to learn to, you know, keep their bikes more secure and drive a message home that, you know, Summit isn't going to be easy pickings anymore for these bicycles. I have heard also that there was a initiative called Bike Rally that was going to be started in conjunction with our own track store here in Summit. So I am due to have a conversation with Officer Keith Quirtick, who, as you know, runs the, the DARE program. The other items I was suggesting was Officer Thompson has been fantastic. He was actually there at the time when my daughter called the police, and they arrived at CVS. And it's a file-your-bicycle-management list that the Summit Police would be able to keep, where you essentially register your bikes with the police, so that they can keep a list in case bikes turn up, which is highly unlikely. The other thing I'm asking is increased police patrols in known hotspots, exactly like CVS, and also extra-secure bicycle racks, because, yes, she should have locked her bike. That has been a conversation over the last two days, because she's now immobile, but there is actually no bicycle rack near CVS, so, you know, it's, it's difficult to secure your bike. But, yeah, so basically, it's security of bicycles, and if need be, obviously, I'm happy to take this offline to speak further.
Thank you, Ms. Wright, for your comments. I, I did have a conversation with our city engineer today about the locations of bike racks, and he indicated that there are bike racks in each of the DeForest lots. So one option would be to park and walk across the street to CVS. It's a little less convenient, but there are racks available there. We don't own the CVS lot, so that would really be up to CVS to place a bike rack there. But he did say that he would look and see if there was any place nearby. It's a fairly constrained area between the loading dock and the traffic light and all the traffic equipment there. I don't know, Mr. Cascades, do you have anything further that you can add on that?
Sure, thank you, Council President. So we are going to explore areas around CVS for future bike racks. As you mentioned, it's very difficult, the sidewalk is thin, that is narrow in that area, and we have to maintain safe pedestrian access, and at least four feet of access for folks to travel safely, pedestrians of travel safety, safely. But we will look at other areas to see if we do have an opportunity on some of the sidewalks in that area. And as you mentioned, Council President, we do have three bike racks, one in each of the DeForest lots, that I believe are able to hold about five bikes each, so I'll keep you updated on what we find, and if we're able to put additional bike racks along the Forest Avenue or anywhere in that area there that is on public property.
Thank you, Director Cascades.
I mean, I think the other question that I, the other question that I have is the sheer volume of bikes that are being stolen in that particular area is, you know, is, is, is there an increase in police activity, say, in that area? I know they've been busy with other things, and I know that we're in the middle of a pandemic, which makes everything a little bit weirder. But obviously, it's, it's, it's been a hotspot, a hotspot. I mean, I was quite surprised, doing just a little bit of research the last couple of days, that there has been four bikes stolen in the last week.
That's a very good question. I was just going to turn it over to our Police Chief, Chief Bartolati, to answer those questions.
Thank you, Council President. Actually, very surprisingly, to correct you, there were five bikes stolen in September alone up in that area. And without going into too much detail on our deployment methods, for obvious reasons, don't want to put that out to the public, our detectives have been working these cases since they didn't come in in early September, and I believe that we have a breakthrough in the case late this evening. So, Mrs. Wright, you will probably get a phone call tomorrow, not only from the detective handling your case that you spoke to today, but also our community policing sergeant Peters, who works with Officer Quirtick on the PSAs that they've been working on, along with our public information officer. Normally, we handle that bike safety tip during our DARE program. Fortunately, with COVID, that really didn't happen last year. This year, it doesn't look that promising either, so they've been working on different vehicles they can deploy out to the school as well.
Can I just take this opportunity, actually, to say that the Summit Police Department have been fantastic. They were amazing with my daughter on the evening, and, you know, I'd like to point out that my daughter may as well have put a bow on the bike, saying, please take me. You know, like I said, she didn't lock it, so, you know, tough love there, but, you know, she is 12. But thank you very much, and, yes, that's, that's the end of my questions, and sorry about the technical glitches. I actually used to work in IT, so it's a bit embarrassing, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright, and I'm sorry that your daughter's bike was stolen, but, but hopefully, we'll be able to, to get it back to her. And anyway, we'll move on to the next question. So we've got Eileen Kelly. Ms. Kelly, go ahead.
Good evening, Council President, members of the council. Eileen Kelly, 47 Woodland Avenue. My question this evening is about our small businesses, and some of the steps we're taking proactively in, in light of the winter being around the corner. Is there a formal sort of guideline or PDF that is publicly available around the process for getting outside heaters? Does that sit with approval review with the Fire Department or Building Works? If you could just add some clarity, I think, on this particular topic, it'd be helpful. I just want to say thank you to all the hard work that's on the agenda tonight around sidewalk cafe permits. I think that's very helpful for our small businesses downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. I'm going to hand that off to Mayor Radist, because I believe she's been working with the, with SDI and the Fire Department on this issue.
Thank you, Council President. And Paul, if, if you want to jump in, if I'm misspeaking, please let me know, please do so. So my understanding is that Nancy Adams from SDI has been in touch with all of the small merchants, small businesses, the restaurants. As you can see on Maple Street, the, there are propane gas heaters in, for Roots and, and Summit House, and that's because propane heaters are allowed without a tent above them. So if there's no tent, they can have the propane heater. If they want heat and a tent, the electric heaters are available, are, are okay for use, but they need to get a permit through the Department of Community Services, through the construction office. It is not a significantly difficult process, it's relatively easy, and, and that is my understanding. So propane without a tent and electric with, and a permit, and this has been conveyed, my understanding, from Nancy Adams, to all of the restaurants. Paul, do you have anything to add to that?
I don't, Mayor. Very accurate.
Thank you. So I hope that answers your question, Eileen.
It does, thank you.
Can I just, I want, I want to just address, there seems to be someone's background noise that we can all hear, and I don't know if there's a way of muting everyone, because I can see that all of, all the panelists are muted during, and yet we can hear someone's background conversation. And it's very, it's very hard to hear people asking questions and hearing responses. So whoever is back there speaking, mute yourself, please.
Okay, so we're going to go on to our next question, which is Diego. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, and thanks for taking my question. Thank you all for the work that you have done to keep some semblance of normalcy in the stores and restaurants throughout the pandemic, and for everything else, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk. I spoke with Mr. Naidoo some time ago, and my question is related to the response from JCPN L to the Isaías storm. It is my impression that global warming is actually a reality, and as a consequence of that, the number of storms is going to increase. About two weeks ago, we had seven named storms in the Atlantic at the same time. Fortunately, none of them seems to have hit land hardly, hard, but that's just a matter of luck. So the problem of what's going to happen in storms is, is here to stay. Now, I'm not an expert in the matter, but I have been trying to get reliable information on the matter, and have been unsuccessful to do so. To me, the crucial question is, how much has Summit and its residents already spent for repairs post Sandy, post Irene, and post that winter storm we had a few years ago? It is my impression that JCPN L received from the state close to a $1 billion bailout for those storms, and I'm sure they're going to be asking for more money. And honestly, I, what I would like to find out is if they can put online a detailed accounting of how much money they have spent in repairs in what reflects the City of Summit, because in reality, I don't know if it costs $1 million a mile or $3 million a mile. Honestly, I am not an expert in that, but I would like to know how much has already been spent, because we may already have spent way more than that without knowing. Thank you.
Mr. Diego, could you please state your last name and also give us your address?
Sure. My name is Diego Coike, and I live on 9 Argal Court.
Okay, thank you. It looks like Councilmember Naidoo has a response to this.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Diego, for calling. And Diego is one of those folks, as I referenced before in my comments, who reached out to me and talked to me about, you know, his thoughts about what we needed to do as far as addressing the storm. So thank you for calling in, Diego. From the city's perspective, and Paul, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but my recollection is that the city does keep a track of how much is spent on storm management as far as dealing with the storms. So we do have numbers with regard to that. Getting JCPN L to give numbers which would be Summit-specific, that would be, I think, a harder lift, frankly. It's not a question that we've asked them yet. As, as the Council President said, we've had a very preliminary discussion with them. It's, given the number of different topics to discuss with them, it frankly did not, did not come up, because we were spending a lot of time talking about communications and trying to get, making sure that residents were going to be able to get, and businesses and so forth, get accurate information going forward, and that was accurate information going forward. And that was a big issue that we needed to talk about of how to make sure that information is conveyed properly. But Paul, can you address the issue of the city's keeping track of financial costs associated with storms?
Sure, through you, Council President.
Go ahead.
So what we do is, for every storm, we keep track of all of the costs associated with any type of restoration for storms, whether they're snowstorms, they're storms of such magnitude as Sandy and Irene in the October snowstorm, and so on and so forth. Those, that data is used for the city also to recoup some of what we spend through FEMA reimbursement. So if FEMA declares a emergency, the city, as well as the county and the states, are eligible for reimbursement through the federal government. So we keep track of all of our overtime, all of our equipment costs, all of our disposal costs, all of our regular hourly costs, any management costs, or any resources that we need to bring into a storm, subcontractors. We keep all of that data and report it to the county, which is then reported to the state, which is then in turn reported to the federal government. So we do have all of the costs associated with any type of storm. It could be a one-inch snowstorm. We have those, we keep that, we keep those records.
Thank you, Mr. Casquez. So if there aren't any more questions on this topic, we'll move on to the next question. We've got Dory Gagnon. Go ahead, Ms. Gagnon. Are you there?
She has to unmute. Hi. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Dory Gagnon, 27 Bedford Road. So kind of piggybacking onto what Sally was, was speaking about, I have not had a child who has lost their bike. But I have a concern with the town, and I have seen a lack of policing around the area. And I have been a big proponent of the Summit Police Department for a very long time. But over the last couple of months, through the community departments, and all of the, the music nights and all of the movie nights, I have not seen any police there. All of the bikes being stolen and everything that's been going on around town, I have not really seen any police around. And I'm kind of scratching my head, saying, what's going on? You know, we're in the middle of a pandemic. We have Black Lives Matter. There's like all these different factors going on. And I'm, I'm a little concerned because if my daughter went to get that bike back or stood up for herself, what could have happened? So I know this is probably a question for the police chief, but I would just like to be, I, I would like to understand as to a community, why this has been, what's happened? Because I'm, I walk around town, you know, I, I people watch, I sit outside. We're all eating outside, and I don't really, I don't really see the police biking around anymore. I don't see their presence as much. So now that we're kind of like getting attacked on all avenues and these bikes are being stolen and people are watching us, we're not really watching them. So I'm just kind of concerned as a community is for our kids' safety, because they're out and about. Where, where, where is like, where's, where are policemen right now? So that's, that is, that's one of my concerns. And then also, I noticed that the police are no longer down at the intersection of Morris and Weaver because of the A and B school schedule. So the kids are crossing the street. And it's been brought to my attention that they were not meant to be there as a crossing guard, but more of a traffic safety officer, if you can just clarify that for me as well. So I have been, I, I was against the Oratory Building, a very vocal person. And Mr. Naidoo was, knows how I was not in favor of that building being built. So now that that building is there, we have a lot of traffic. And now that there's this proposal to put a new school down at the end of adjacent towards Oratory with 200 more kids, and now we don't have a police officer. There's a lot of chatter here that people are terrified with the decrease in the police around the area. I don't see them at all giving tickets around my area or Canoe Brook or Bedford or Morris. There's no traffic officer there. We're all kind of worried. So this is kind of like all, you know, my concern is, is the police right now. It's what's happening. I, I don't want this Primrose School to be built. I, I couldn't stop Oratory. I really don't want Primrose to be built. So that's tomorrow's planning board meeting that I'm going to be at. But if you can give me some insight as to what's going on with the, the police, I would really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Gagnon. I'm going to turn that over to, to Chief Bartolati.
Sure. Ms. Gagnon, thank you very much for bringing that concern forward. With regards to the Morrison Weaver intersection there, we are experiencing a very high shortage in crossing guards at the moment, as City Administrator Rogers pointed out in his report this evening. So what that has caused us to do is defer resources to those school crossings where there is a large number of, of children crossing, walking to school. That particular post, when it was staffed by police department at that time, was for traffic-related reasons and vehicle maneuverability down in that area. So that was one of the areas, because it is not a designated crossing post, and we do have designated crossing posts throughout the city that were uncovered, that our resources had to be redeployed to those areas. At this time, until we could fully staff the crossing posts, that, that area does remain unmanned. As at any given point right now, we are deploying about four to five officers every morning for school crossing posts until we can get those guard numbers back up. With regards to concern of not seeing police presence, I assure you the officers are out there. Without going into too much detail, I can tell you that we are out there in a different deployment method. As you know, we've had a number of car thefts over the last couple of months, and we've readjusted our deployment methods in terms of how our officers are deployed, what vehicles they are deployed in, what uniforms they're deployed in. But I assure you that they are out there as we have always been.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. So moving on. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, as Dory knows, when I was in the planning board, I was one of those who opposed the Oratory expansion. That's on the record. So I have always had concerns, and I think rightfully so. There are concerns regarding overall traffic in that area and on Morris Avenue. And I think residents have a right to be concerned about the amount of traffic that's there. And because there's very narrow sidewalks on Morris Avenue that kids travel down to Washington School and so forth. And, and, and as, in fact, you know, the former Selgin West Campus builds out, there'll be more traffic in that area, frankly. And, and people do have a right to be concerned about development in and around that area and what that impact will be. So I agree with that. But I do want to say, and I don't, I'm sure you did not intend this story, which is that the Black Lives Matters has anything to do with any issue dealing with the need for additional police presence. There's plenty of, there's peaceful protests that occurred in this town associated with that. Thousands of people's residents, high school students came out, protested peacefully. One thing has nothing to do with the other. And let's not try to, I, I think people should not walk away getting any wrong impression that somehow Black Lives Matter and the need for additional police presence, they're totally unrelated subjects.
Thank you, Councilmember Naidoo. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Okay, so are there any other comments from members of the public? Okay, Ryan Felmit, go ahead.
Hi, guys. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. All right. I'm Ryan, excuse me, Ryan Felmit of 57 Madison Avenue. And I appreciate the time to spend with you tonight here, guys. I have not joined a, a meeting to date, and I've been a resident for six years. So I appreciate it and apologies for the lack of knowledge on the organization of, of how this goes. But I just wanted to bring up a couple of points. And one is the format of this meeting. I've been on other board meetings and things like that. And the format of this meeting is great, but I think it's missing one thing. And we can see you, but you guys can't see us. So we don't know how many, not even see us, we don't know how many of us there are on the call. Someone mentioned earlier in the, in the call that there were many participants. So what is many? Is that 10? Is that 20? Is that 30, 100? I don't know. We don't know. And
Well, right now, it's 11, just for your information.
All right, cool. Thank you for that. And secondly, just on the power issues. I know we've talked about that. I think that it's a twofold issue, something that we can do probably with JCPNL and something we can do here in the town. And I'm just wondering if there's anything that's being talked about in terms of vegetation. In turn, for example, Kent Place Boulevard, if you drive down Kent Place Boulevard right now, you'll see wires cutting right through trees that are hanging over the streets. So I would like to, you know, we've all said we're not experts in this, in this topic, and I understand that. But what can Summit do to help avoid a potential issue as we face the winter? Someone mentioned the three storms in 2018. We had three back-to-back nor'easters during winter 2018. What if we had that during a COVID uprising? What could Summit do in addition to having a, a more of a larger coalition and, and hopefully joining with other towns? So I'd like to hear a little bit more about that. And then number three, last point, is just on mail in general, and this isn't, this isn't a vote-by-mail topic, this is just general mail. We all know it's a federally-run organization, but we also know that we are residents of Summit, and we expect to get paychecks, we expect to get medication, we expect to get very, you know, it could be legal matters, things like that. So it'd be nice to get some communication if there is any knowledge about what's going on with the mail down here. We're in our part of Summit, we're not receiving mail sometimes a week or two or more at a time, a couple of days a week. So there's no cadence in terms of how often we're receiving mail. So if there's any coordination between the federal, our federal body and yourselves, it'd be great to just communicate that to us. So I appreciate your time and thank you for the, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ryan. So, so Councilmember Naidoo, I think we'll address the, the power issues. And then I think we can talk about trees and then mail after that. So go ahead, Councilmember Naidoo.
Well, first of all, Ryan is, is again, one of those folks that reached out to me with regard to the power issues. Ryan was actually very helpful to, to us in helping to set up a conversation with folks in Chatham Borough. And we had a very good conversation about talking about their issues, our issues, and working together. And I think one of the things that, without going into too much detail in that conversation, because obviously, when people have those types of conversations, they want to have some degree of certainty that everything that they see, speak is not going to be suddenly out there. Because, because that's the way you actually achieve things and having, you know, discussions, free-flowing discussions. It's called the Chatham House rules because that's the way that, that we want to have things done. But among the things is to talk about how working together with other towns, because obviously, we're not alone in dealing with JCPNL. Other towns have to deal with JCPNL in a combined process of working together with other people, what their thoughts are, our thoughts. So I want to thank Ryan publicly for his efforts. He's very concerned about this issue, rightfully so. And, and, but he's also one of those folks who's stepping up to help try to solve it, and that's always appreciated. So let me just say that. With regard to trees, I think Paul probably is better than I am in able to addressing this or how we deal with trees under the line. So I will defer to Paul, but certainly coordination with towns is an important issue.
Director Casquez, would you like to address our tree program?
Sure, through you, Council President. So thank you. Yeah, I could give you just a brief overview on our program. We do have a city forester that performs a tree survey each year to determine trees in need of pruning or diseased trees in need of removal, and also finding locations for new trees here in the city of Summit. We are Tree City USA, and we do love and support our trees. The JCPNL, you had mentioned that you see on, I think you used Kent Place Boulevard as an example of wires running through trees. The utility company does have a right-of-way in that area. And the tree, most of the trees, you do see that the wires, their infrastructure are running through are city or public trees. However, they have a maintenance program, vegetative maintenance program, where they trim back 10 feet surrounding, within 10 feet of their infrastructure. Their infrastructure includes telephone poles and the, the wires that bring electricity into your homes. So they continue to have that program so they can maintain reliability. As far as what we can do, we, as I said, we do work closely with JCPNL as well. If we do see issues, we call on JCPNL to address some of them. But however, I don't think the answer is to have trees removed from every wire or not have trees where there are wires. I think they could live together, believe it or not. And we can still enjoy trees and the purpose of trees and the beauty of trees. But however, we do have a pretty aggressive, the city of Summit has a pretty aggressive program on, 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 you know, removal of trees, and also planting trees in the right place. So we do work with JCPNL. As Councilman Naidoo had mentioned before, there are a list of trees that we do plant under wires, existing wires. And those, that list is actually been given to us by JCPNL that they do assure that that is the proper tree for underwires. So that's what we do to help. I'm not sure of, you know, we're working closely with JCPNL. If there's anything else that you, you can suggest. But we try to maintain the trees that we have here, and the city has over 10,000 trees. We are a tree city and we love our trees. So it's difficult when you, you know, you want to maintain trees and you have, you know, wires as well. So there's always that balance. And we sure do not want to see one day no trees along the streets because of the, the, the wire. So that's what I have, Council President. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Director Casquez. I appreciate that update. So as far as the, the mail service, I believe our mayor has had conversations with the postmaster. So I'm going to turn it over to her to answer that question.
Thank you, Council President. Yes, I have received several emails from people who have had problems receiving their mail. Frankly, I'm having trouble receiving my mail. I think, I think many of us are. I went and I've spoken with the postmaster twice. And the fact of the matter is that the federal government, through the Postmaster General, has changed some of the funding requirements for a while, and has stopped from now, I think. But for a while, he was not allowing any overtime and had instructed the postmasters in the local municipalities and towns that if you, if you haven't had, if, if your postal carriers haven't done up everything they need to do within their allotted time, then they have to come back and they shouldn't utilize overtime, and the mail has to wait till the next day. So it's a, I would presume it's a cost-cutting measure on the part of the federal government. Although I do think that once the Postmaster General was discussing this with members of Congress, he was testifying that, that he has rolled back that, that, you know, directive. So that I think he is allowing overtime now. So that is certainly a problem. But, but frankly, there's been a problem for a long time with the post office. It's, it's kind of dependent on who your postal carrier is. It is, it is not the, it is, it is a very reliable source of mail. But, but when funding is cut and when they can't get overtime, when they can't hire people, it's a problem. And there have been some postal workers who have decided for various reasons that they cannot work because of COVID concerns. So I don't think we can underestimate that people, you know, going to, from house to house to house, when maybe a member of their family has COVID, they feel they when maybe a member of their family has COVID, they feel they cannot do that. So there has been a decrease in in the amount of people that are willing to work because of their, they're taking care of their own safety. We all keep talking about how we're so proud of our frontline workers who are putting themselves and perhaps sometimes their families in harm's way. But frankly, they can decide, I'm not going to do that. So so that's part of the problem, was a funding issue, and it was a personnel issue. I think we're turning the corner. I think things are getting better from what I understand. But that's the information I have to share about that. And then I just want to circle back a little bit about the trees. In this last storm, a few of the major power lines that were down were down because private property trees, large private property trees, fell on those lines. That is, there is nothing the city can do about that. We cannot require private property owners to remove their trees. We can encourage them. I guess we can require it. But our guy can't, our, our forester can't go to every single house in town and find out what's going on there. So it's up to property owners also to really maintain their own trees. And it's because it's not just the city trees that cause downed power lines. It's also private property trees. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So with that, if there are no further question, are there any other questions from members of the public? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment period, and we'll move on to the main part of the agenda. So the first thing we have is an ordinance for introduction. The first one is a law and labor matter. Madam Clerk, could you please read the ordinance?
Rosemary, you have to unmute. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Sorry. I'll repeat that. An ordinance amending the code Chapter 4, General Licensing 4-20, Regulating of Sidewalk Cafes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Bowman?
Thank you, Council President. As the solicitor or city clerk said, ID number 7357 is an ordinance that we're introducing tonight and will be heard October 6. Essentially, it is that we are going to be extending the the timeframe that that restaurants will be able to have street cafes from nine months to to 12 months, and that we are also establishing fees and guidelines that they will have to follow. We will discuss this more on October 6 when we have it for hearing. I move we introduce this ordinance tonight.
I second it.
Hey, Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Okay, the motion carries. We'll have the hearing on October 6. And now we're moving on to resolutions. So we're going to start with two finance resolutions. Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. The first finance resolution is number 7360. This resolution authorizes the issuance of a bond note for the joint meeting through the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank. This is for the flood mitigation project in the amount of $2,375,000. Has been discussed before. The joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties is the city's wastewater collection and treatment plant. This money is Summit's portion of the first phase of construction on a critical infrastructure project to mitigate potential flooding. As a reminder, FEMA will reimburse 90% of this money. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Okay, any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Did I forget something, Madam Clerk?
Council President, I believe the first two finance resolutions require a roll call.
Roll call. My apologies.
That's okay.
I was moving on to resolutions. I wasn't thinking roll call. Great. Okay.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Okay, the motion carries. So we'll move on to finance number two, and this time we'll remember the roll call. Go ahead, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution 7366. This resolution authorizes the issuance of a bond anticipation note in the amount of $10,032,000. This is made up of capital expenditures in the amount of $5,299,000 from 2019 and $4,733,000 from 2020. Federal interest rates are likely to remain low until at least 2023. And as a reminder, thanks to many years of responsible fiscal stewardship, the City of Summit remains the only municipality with AAA status from each of the three major credit rating agencies. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call, please? Oh, wait, comments. Does anyone have any comments? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, so hearing none. We'll move on to roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Okay, the the motion carries. So we're moving on to administrative policies and community services. Councilmember Naidoo?
Thank you, Council President. Pursuant to our closed session discussion, I'd like to introduce a resolution to have explicit what is basically already understood as being our social media policy. As we all know, there's a lot of stuff now on social media. We, the city has a Facebook page. But we want to make sure, as every other organization and entity has, that people understand what the rules of the road are. And this is making explicit what we all understand is the way to have a civil and civic discussion, which is that the social media policy simply states can't be abusive to folks, and you can't go ahead and spam and promote your own products, and you can't go ahead and demean other people's ethnic origin and sexuality and so forth. The standard stuff that everybody expects as a way of having a rational discourse between individuals. I think this will make no impact, hopefully, on 99.9% of residents. But it's necessary to have it out there so that everybody understands what the rules of the road are. With that, I'd like to introduce it.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Okay, any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. Let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. So we'll move on now to community programs and parking services. Councilmember O'Sullivan?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 7367 to authorize a negotiated contract for 2020 through 2021 for athletic field maintenance services for $42,820.20 per year. On June 9, 2020, the City of Summit adopted Resolution Number 39363, which authorized the Department of Community Programs to negotiate a contract with True Green LP for our athletic field maintenance. If you remember, True Green had some clerical issues with their first two bids, and those were rejected. Because they were the sole bidder, and their bid was rejected twice, New Jersey Local Public Contracts Law states that the contract can be awarded without competitive bidding. The city has come to an agreement with True Green for maintenance services for all of our athletic fields for a total of $42,820.20. This agreement includes two one-year extensions that will run through December 31, 2023. When you read the breakdown of the services that True Green will perform on our athletic fields, I want you to know that these are prices for services that will be performed. For example, if True Green does not aerate the field at Lincoln Hubbard, they are not getting paid for that service. True Green has been a professional and reliable partner with the City of Summit, providing us with field maintenance services in 2017, 18, and 19. I move this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. So we'll move on to to community programs and parking services, Resolution Number Two. Councilmember O'Sullivan?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 7371 to declare a vacancy in the Parking Services Agency for one part-time parking enforcement officer. As discussed in the closed session, we have recently had two part-time parking enforcement officers resign, and there is a need to declare one vacancy. I move this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay. Councilmember Bowman, are you just fiddling with your pen?
My pen, yeah.
Okay, sorry, couldn't tell. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So moving on, we have three capital projects and community services resolutions. Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Council President. Capital Projects Resolution Number One is number 7082, and it's to appoint a public works manager. The state of New Jersey requires that every municipality appoint a principal public works manager to upgrade and uphold the quality of public works management in our jurisdiction. Paul Cascades has held this role for many years in an exemplary fashion. And he is now turning it over and asking that the council appoint a new public works manager to ensure that the succession plan in the city is intact. And I will be asking the council to approve the resolution to appoint Aaron Schrager, the city engineer, as the city public works manager. And I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second it.
Any comments from members of council? So I want to clarify, this is an existing employee who's taking on an additional role for those in the public who might not know. And this does not come with any additional stipend or payment at this point. It's, it's an additional responsibility that he'll be taking on. So, yeah, okay. Any other comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. The next project's resolution is number 7083, and that's to appoint a certified recycling professional. Again, along the same lines in order to put in place our succession plan. Paul Cascades is currently the certified recycling professional in the city. Again, he has done an exemplary job in that position. And we are asking the city to appoint Michael Caputo, who has all the certifications necessary and has successfully completed all the requisite coursework in order to be certified as the new certified recycling professional. As with the previous position, I just want to clarify, as the Council President pointed out, that this is an existing employee who is taking on new responsibilities, and there is also no stipend associated with this responsibility. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second it.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So last Capital Projects Resolution, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. The final Capital Projects Resolution is number 7348, and it is to declare a vacancy in the Division of Public Works in the Recreation, Parks, and Trees Unit. We recently had an employee leave that unit, and we are asking to declare a vacancy to replace him. He is an essential position in the Recreation, Parks, and Trees Unit, which is, that employee is involved in both the fall cleanup and in snow removal crews. So that position is needed, and we need to fill it fairly quickly. So we're asking to declare a vacancy, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second it.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I think my sound just, just wiped out with, did we vote? Okay, good. All right. So the motion carries.
I think everyone said aye.
Okay, good. All right, thanks. Okay, so now we're moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so now we're moving on to council members' comments and new business. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to say? Councilmember Little?
I just wanted to say that we're now a few weeks into the school year, and this is definitely a different school year than we've ever had before with students attending a partial remote and partial in-person and some students fully remote. And there was a lot of, a lot of community involvement and a lot of work that went into this model on the part of all the teachers in the district and the school board. And now that we're in a few weeks, I just want to thank and recognize everyone involved, from all the workers and staff at the school, all the way up through the teachers, the administration, and the Board of Education. It's very clear at this point how much hard work and effort has gone into this and how hard all the teachers and staff are working to make this school year, which is unprecedented and difficult, as successful as it possibly could be. So I just wanted to point that out and thank everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. That's very well said, and I join in that sentiment. Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President Fox. I just wanted to take this opportunity to applaud our mayor, who hosted a mayor's forum on diversity conversation that was very well-attended, and the panel was a part of it. And it sounds like it's going to be the first of several conversations. And I just wanted to acknowledge and recognize, got a chance to meet the new superintendent and our police chief, and some of the usual suspects were a part of it, former co-chair of the Diversity Committee. But it was a great, great start to a conversation, and just really wanted to thank the mayor for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Hairston. Does anyone else have any comments?
I have a quick.
Go ahead, Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. I have a comment about the use, I won't be the first or the last, but I have a comment about the use of our See Click Fix feature on the city's website. Last week, there was a recycling issue where one of Basso's recycling trucks was leaking crushed glass on the street. The city received a number of complaints through the See Click Fix feature, and a street sweeper was dispatched to the areas affected very quickly. However, some complaints went to Facebook. Well, by the time we got word of the Facebook posts and emailed Director Cascades, the workday was over. Now, those Facebook posts make you feel good and get everyone riled up, but they do not solve your issue as quickly. Please use seeclickfix@cityofsummit.org for real and timely results.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Sullivan. And you can find the See Click Fix, it's also called Report a Concern. It's at the bottom of the website. So it's a great option, and things, you'll get a response back usually within 24 hours. Things happen really fast that way. It's better than Facebook, for sure. So thank you for pointing that out. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, so hearing none, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, so have a good evening, everyone. Thank you so much.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Wear your masks.